Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of November twentieth, 2023. This is Select Board Chair Tom Lucusa, and I will be confirming that all members in person who anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Josh Levine.
Here.
Veneet Hemavvadi.
Here.
Marco.
Here.
Don Zirkel. Don Zirkel.
Here.
As staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
And Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This is, this open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar, as posted on the agenda and the town's website identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q and A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending this meeting in person, please raise your hand. When we get to the comment section of the meeting, I will call on you and approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelist, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. If anyone attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. Any announcements? No? Okay, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we start with some announcements. There's a Heart Springs Clothing Donation Challenge. Clothing Donation Challenge hosted by the Recycling Commission and the Heart Springs Foundation will be held on December second from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Long Meadow Shops on Bliss Road. For additional information, please visit www-longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. And I'm sure we all have some clothing we can donate. Long Meadows Fall Curbside Pickup for Leaves. If you have them in a town, P A Y T Leaf Bag will be on Saturday, December second, and residents who are putting leaf bags out for a collection are advised to have them to the curb by 7:00 a.m. on those Saturday mornings. Collection is weather dependent. The drop off area in the meadows off of West Road will remain open through Sunday, December third. Additional information about the leaf program can be found at the town website, www-longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. Town municipal offices will be closed on Thursday, November 23rd and Friday, November 24th for Thanksgiving. The Long Meadow Select Board and Board of Assessors will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 4th, 2023 at 7:30 to hear public input and then vote on the proper tax classification of all property in the town of Long Meadow. The hearing will be held in Long Meadow Public Schools Central Office Meeting Room 15A, 235 Bliss Road, Long Meadow, Mass, and via Zoom webinar to be posted on the Select Board agenda, www-longmeadowma.gov. Okay, boards and appointments. Is there a motion to appoint Richard Bontempo to the Conservation Commission for an open three-year term?
I'll move that we appoint Richard Bontempo to a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2025.
Second.
In the second, okay. All those in favor? Okay. Resident comments, do we have anyone wanting to make a comment?
I do not see anyone.
Do you have someone?
No.
Oh, no, okay, all right. Then we have Select Board comments. Anyone on the Select Board have a comment to make tonight? All right, well, I'll look this way. I always look that way first.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to congratulate the women's, or the girls' soccer team for winning Western Mass Championship. Congratulations. And then also, I was out of town and, and obviously heard about the, the fire that took place and just wanted to, you know, thank the first responders for, you know, acting quickly. And, you know, my thoughts are with the, the family. I actually happen to know the family. So I just want to thank the fire department and I'm glad everyone was safe. Thank you.
And Mark, did you add your handle?
Yeah, I did, thanks. I have a couple of updates. I attended a few meetings, I wanted to just update the board on it. I was at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. They did announce that, that the Long Meadow L Project is on target. It's delayed target, that's the, that's the north end of Route Five. It will be advertised for, for bids in January, I think January 18th, it goes out for advertising for bids. Normal processes, you know, bids come back and probably it's the fall, earliest is the fall of 2024 before any, any work can begin there. But it's on, on target. All the other projects continue to slip. It doesn't bode well for the south end of Long Meadow Street, but they're not giving any dates anymore because it's, the, the costs are going way up and, and they're just kind of hanging out to see what they can manage and afford, when they can, when they can afford it. But that, that's moving forward. Today I attended a, a building committee, it was a joint meeting with the building committee and the, and the capital planning committee, it was actually held at the police station in the, to view their revised kitchen that they did based on capital, capital planning or capital commitment from the town meeting and approval by the, or support by the, the building committee. Kitchen came out great. I mean, they did, everybody who worked on it, I think it was the DPW did most of the work, did a great job. It came out great and the patrol officers loved the place, so it's, it's really good. Also, I also attended Scannick Valley Healthcare Board Meeting. They're, you know, pretty much on, on track for setting their rates for next year. I think they're pretty well set. The rates are relatively modest increases, just again showing the benefits of having a healthcare system that we were part of in local healthcare system like Scannick Valley. Their costs are well under control and, and they, they're doing great things with things like their prescription drug program is called CANRX, it's from Canada, and saving hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in, in, in prescription drugs for retirees in the Scannick Valley area. And finally, I attended the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority. They're all set with their budget for next year, finally. You know, it's been a kind of a journey because so much of their funding comes from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and, and, but they're, they are all set and they're working through issues. The ridership on PVTA is just about recovered now to pre-pandemic levels, which it took a long time to come back, but it has.
Is it still free?
No, it's not free.
Oh, okay.
And they're talking about making it free.
Oh, that's what it is, okay.
But they have not made it free yet.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I would just, a couple of things. I went to the Council of Aging meeting and someone on the board was asking me about the property where Armadas was located. They moved to Hamden. And it's difficult, you know. We're used to our town being in really good shape and, and this project's been sitting there and, you know, I'm not sure of all the details, but I do know that for sure, insurance companies, some things are pretty straightforward. If you say you have a gallbladder problem, the insurance company says, okay, we'll pay X amount of money to have that done. When it comes to property challenges, how much a building is worth and, and so forth, it takes them a lot longer. And so that could be part of the holdup. But, you know, we did have a situation in town with the Brewer Young Mansion where it was, looked pretty bad for a long time. And it, you know, eventually, you know, we found a solution to that and it's worked out fine. And so all I can say is be patient, you know, things will happen. The other thing is, in preparation for the project, the building that will take place where the First Church of Christian Scientists is, Lynn did her due diligence to, to look at the last rebuild or build out where the CVS was in there. And, you know, she just, she found some money that wasn't unpaid to the town. I know I can't talk in detail about it, but, you know, we're just really lucky to have a town manager that does such a great job. And, you know, I'm used to Paul Pesterzak just casually saying, oh, you know, I, I just re-did some loans and I saved, you know, millions of dollars to the town. But this is the first time, yeah, a town manager has said, oh, I just happened to find this money that we owe, you know. So it was really, you know, it's a pleasure to have someone in our employ that does such a great job. So, okay. And we'll move on to the town manager's report.
Thank you. So for those who were at town meeting last week, I wanted to follow up on an item that came up during the meeting. It was regarding the Coal Vest Zone change. Attorney Roberts, who represents Coal Vest, had followed up after the meeting to let us know that he was able to confirm that the property description that was listed in the warrant was accurate, and it's exactly how it reads in the original deed for the parcel. The deed also references a 1961 plan for the parcel, which is recorded in the land records and illustrates the location of the property. Significantly, the plan describes the street, which is now known as Redfern Drive, as proposed Frank Smith Road, which explains why the deed used that name at that time. As is the custom, all subsequent deeds recite the original description. The street name was ultimately changed to Redfern Drive. The decision to proceed with the vote without amendment of the article was the right call. Another follow-up from fall town meeting. We saw the largest voter turnout that we've seen in several years. There were 821 registered voters in attendance when we were at our all-time high at the meeting. All 30 warrant articles passed in a little more than three hours. And then in my report, I show a little excerpt of the type of reporting that we're able to get with the electronic voting mechanism. It's pretty much just shows the breakdown of each vote, but it also gives us a pie chart to, so you can visualize the percentage. Thank you to the town clerk, town, town moderator, and all the volunteers who worked in supporting town meeting. On November 11th, there was a Veterans Day event hosted by the Veteran Services Department. This was the first Veterans Day breakfast at the Adult Center. The event was very well attended and actually ran out of food. Thank you to Lena Valturo for coordinating the event and the Cub Pack 295 for attending and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And an act on safe passage for bicycles. This, you'll notice some new signage that's been placed around town. It was related to an act to reduce fatalities, which was signed into law in December of 2022. And as part of the law, some language was added that actually charged Mass DOT with erecting and maintaining signage along public ways to notify operators and motor vehicles of the requirement to keep a safe distance of not less than four feet from bicyclists. And Mass DOT noted that they don't have the capacity to go around and put all these signs up, nor do they necessarily have the authority to do that. And so what they did is they made grant funding available to communities. And we were a very early adopter of this this spring, and I'm happy to say that we requested 54 signs. They've been received by the DPW and they've started to go up around town. In my report, there is a image of the sign, and then you'll see the locations that the DPW has identified fitting Mass DOT criteria on where these signs should go. And so I do think most of them are up, if not all of them are ready. Happy to take any questions that you have.
Yes, Josh.
On that, I just was hoping you could pass along the DPW on the water and sewer chart. There's two years on it, but if we could see them side to side, just for an easier year to year comparison, I thought that could be helpful. And I read Chief Dearborn's fire report, and his first item was about the tenants leaving and how hard it is to keep somebody in Long Meadow. How we're training people and then they're going off. And I hope we can remedy that. And I, I just wanted to ask if, has there, I can't recall, has there been a wage study for the fire department, or is this just part of our negotiations?
Generally part of our negotiations. They, they'll bring comps to the table, I'll bring comps to the table, and we'll have a discussion about that.
And, and, all right. And so during the negotiation, I'm sure Chief Dearborn, their negotiator, says we're losing people because we're, we can't stack up. Well, you have a difficult, difficult job already, but I hope we can do, figure out a way to, to remedy that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Mark?
Yeah, I, Lynn, I appreciate your, your comments. I think it's worth commenting because some people can't, don't look at the, the town manager's report. You said that we, you had an example of what we get from the vote count. I think people should know that it does not track, nor can we track individual votes. It's just a total.
Correct.
So that people, you know, I've, I've had that question, can we go back and see how every number voted? The answer is no. So I think it's worth noting that.
Correct, thank you, yep.
Okay, a couple of things. One is, it's great that we're going to have these safe passage signs up for bicyclists. You know, I don't know, my, my daughter does a lot of biking, she bikes across country actually. And when you see one of those bikes on the side of the road, it's painted white, it's called a ghost bike, and it's usually where someone has died. We don't have any in our town, and this will help prevent that sort of thing. So I'm glad that that is going to happen. The other thing is, in the police department, they reported the increased controls in town in response to the Israeli Hamas war, and appreciate that, that extra effort and the chief just stepping up like that. The, the other thing is, we had some officers who, who were commended. Captain Kerry Fontaine, who's retired, was involved in, recognized by the U.S. Attorney General for helping with the investigation on an incendiary device that was taken to the Long Meadow Geriatric Life Care Facility. And those, so he was commended for that. And our deputy fire chief, Maske, you know, happened to be a big part of, when there was a fire on Meadow Lock, taking steps to go in, and so he was also recognized in the reports. The folks who were involved in the vandalism at Bliss Park, it was in the report, it said that, you know, there were some juveniles who were held accountable by the grand jury for situations of vandalism and assault and battery. So that's, that's good, those things are happening. And the other thing is, the DPW mentioned about the 2023 road paving projects. So those of you who, you know, haven't looked at this, but the, the streets they have proposed, I'll just quickly mention Woolworth, Blochland, Willett, Terry, Woodside, Whitkin, Edward Circle, Pine Wood Hills, Erskine Drive, Cherry Lane, Pine Wood Drive, Cherry Lane, again, Pine Wood Hills, and Carolyn Drive are on the list and they're going out for bid soon. So that's in the, the reports of the DPW, which is on our agenda today. And, and that's, that's all I have to say, but it's good, a lot of good news. All right, the next thing would be old business, do we need approval of the minutes for October 16th?
I'll move we approve the minutes of October 16th. I sent Mike a couple of typos, but subject to those typos.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All right. And we're onto new business. The Greenwood Center Municipal Office Consolidation Plan, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So let's, Lynn, you know, the, we have an agenda, our, and a memo is attached to it from the town manager detailing how the work to evaluate Greenwood Center and the former Adult Center wing to use for consolidated municipal offices. And so Lynn, would you like to present?
Thanks. Yes, thank you. And joining me tonight are the architects from LLB, who, who we have retained. But before I introduce them, I just wanted to quickly just remind on the purpose of this project. So with the new Adult Center, the former Adult Center vacated the space. It then left us with about 10,000 square feet of municipal office space that has been underutilized since they've left. Originally, we had Westcom Regional Emergency Communications Center look at the space to determine whether or not it could be used for dispatch purposes. They did, you know, a very brief feasibility study and determined that it would not make sense for them to retrofit it. And so then at that point, we began looking at it as potential consolidated municipal offices. We had Hill Engineering do some preliminary work in 2021. And then when the ARPA funding became available and after discussing with you all here, we had earmarked a significant amount of that ARPA money. The idea is to consolidate town hall and community house functions into one space that has more parking on one level and much greater ADA accessibility than we currently have right now. And if, I'm sure you all are familiar with the spaces that we're in now, they're challenging spaces if we were to add staff, and certainly they're challenging if we are faced with trying to make an ADA accommodation or even just regular business transactions with members of the public. And so we then used that ARPA funding and brought in LLB architects to look at a full renovation plan, to, to see what was possible there. We are represented tonight by Patrick Torborg, who has led the way on this work for us, and I, and you'll also see Brian Valentine here as well. Earlier this summer, when LLB had started working to develop these plans, they came back to us and said, it's looking like with the cost of the renovation, you would likely need to put a fire suppression system in, so a sprinkler system in this building. And knowing that we had limited funds available, they asked how we wanted to proceed there. And so myself, the fire chief, building inspector, fire prevention officer, facilities director, DPW director, and assistant town manager met, looked this over, had a discussion about what we felt would be the best course of action. And at that point, we went back to LLB and said, please proceed, as if we had the funding to do the full renovation and installation of a sprinkler system. And we will then run a parallel project to try to do a much scaled down version to see if we could accomplish some sort of office consolidation with the budget that we have. So tonight, you're going to see actually three options. One is a full renovation with all fire suppression, full walls built out in the, in the offices. The other is a similar version to that, but a little bit less fancy. And then the third option is essentially just a facelift with paint, new carpet, and modular furniture. And so I will, we'll first start with the renovation options, both the baseline and enhanced option, and then after that, we'll talk about the facelift option. And I'd love to get your feedback and have a discussion about it, and if, if you, you know, give me some direction you think we should be going here. I'll kick it over to Patrick.
His microphone is off, if you want to. There you go.
Hello, I'm Patrick Torborg, I'm with LLB Architects. As we introduced, I'm the project manager. And Brian is with me today as well. And we'd just like to present the project we're working on. Make sure my screen. You can see the screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
As we all know, this is the Greenwood Center. It was built in the mid-sixties. And it looks very much like a school building in the sixties. Lot of C and U, concrete block walls, drop ceilings, very, very much of the, of that age. Being close to 60 years old is starting to show some wear and tear. We walked through, we didn't see a whole lot of new adjustments, new improvements, because like a lot of it, which you see is probably original. So what we're looking on and doing is to accept the idea of the conversion part of this project. So it is a former school that tried to convert it to be more of a professional office space for the municipal offices. And we started looking at inspiration images, at things to communicate ideas quickly and easily. Looking at the transaction counters and ways to inspire that. Good, good signage, so everyone comes in, can, I'm looking for. And then again, just professional finishes, which you might see in an office. Again, trying to convert it from that sort of school building to an office building to have it feel, upgraded finishes and just newer and nicer. So the baseline plan is, just as the name implies, there would be new flooring, new paint to the walls, new ceilings, new lights. There would be transaction counters at each of the department offices that would be open, that would be retaining the existing doors from the corridor to save cost and save, save expense basically. That leaves us with just very much open concept spaces. Where we came, we can put in some sort of a smaller partition, but not necessarily a full wall. As you see here, so these in green is the departments. This is a meeting space, basically one large conference room. This would be an interview room for human resources, and then guest rooms and back house. This is a label staff break room, but it could also be used as a night time meeting space in the, in the old lunchroom. They're going to be, for the enhanced option, very similar, but we've had, take the opportunity to add some more full height walls to, to make more meeting spaces so that you can have one-on-one conversations if it's just two people or four people. And for, to just create the space that you might need for offices. We're interviewing the current employees, and there are opportunities where they publicly come and meet with the staff. So a lot of this is oriented in a way that you can get in directly from the entry. Additional conference room has been created here. This is really, in the other version, it would really be quite a large space. So here are some renderings. On the left, you see the baseline option, which is pretty much what you see today. Some new ceiling, maybe paint the existing door frames, put in new door hardware, but not a whole lot, built in new flooring in the corridor, but not, not a whole else would change. And the enhanced option, we have the opportunity to build this out with some millwork, do some really nice signage, and do a more inviting entry into the space. You know, whether it's a glass door like this, or maybe it's just open, it's an option we can do. Maybe named after spaces, from the top is a sort of a typical office suite. Again, on the left, you see on the left, you see the baseline option, just modular furniture, the transaction counter to the left. In this baseline option, we have to keep the transaction window open, no glass, to limit the need for heating and cooling scope for the project. But we did a basic ACT ceiling with new lights. We have a partition over here in the corner to help divide the space to make it sort of meeting room-esque, but not necessarily full-on separation. And then on the right, we're looking at modification to the ceiling plan to help create some, define the spaces, because it's one large space, one room, using these lower panels, ceiling grids to sort of define the space a little bit more, and add some interest. And you can see later on, we'll look at some options, it's an opportunity to show color, and maybe influence crucible performance, multiple sound. In the bottom, you have the conference room. This is the massive, large conference room. Just basic lights, basic finishes. On the right, we see the enhanced version, where we can do some more millwork in ceiling panels to make the space a little more inviting, a little more interesting. Closer look at the ceiling ideas. This would be the ceiling blades, the baffles. Again, you can just see the outline of the desks below, so this helps kind of sort of break up the space to, whereas the work zone versus maybe walk into the space. Again, some visual interests, some colors, some sound mitigation. And then we look at the different light fixtures we're proposing. This is the enhanced version, again, in the baseline. It would just be basic light fixtures in a ACT ceiling. So in the baseline, you would not get the P1s, you would not get these A1 and A2. It would just be basic lights. In the corridor, we have these chopper lights that they shine down beyond the ceiling planes. It's sort of a hidden light fixture that washes the wall, really nice effect. A taste of the materials we're proposing, mostly for just to get the form of colors and textures we're thinking about. This is all, you know, up for debate and be figured out once the project goes into the design. But this D-LAM would be used, this is plastic laminate, to be used at the apartment entries. We heard that route. Solid surface countertops in nicer spaces versus maybe plastic laminate in other places, back of the house. Carpet tile, again, for texture and color, and to help with the sound retention or sound These are just kind of inspiration images as it relates to the carpet tile, an idea of the patterns we can use, cut in the mix of colors that are possible. We can really get it pretty detailed, or we can get pretty sort of straightforward with our patterns, depending on how we want to go. This would be more colorful option versus more of a traditional or muted colors, traditional pattern. And a lot of our projects are with town halls and universities, laboratories. And the most important thing for the products we use is ease of maintenance and durability. And so each of these products offers advantages as far as that goes, to help improve the cost investment and just upkeep. Some more inspiration images for the ceiling baffles and the various crucible options we have. Here in the center, it's probably closest what we're currently proposing in that one office we saw. It's a nice divider that is perforated, has a nice pattern, allows some visuals, some light come through, but also helps to find space and kind of muffle the sound. Other options would be panels we can put on the wall, either break up visually and as those offer some crucible performance. And again, options we had for the ceiling baffles, currently we're showing more of a uniform look, but we can go with different heights and sizes as well. So we took all this, we sent our plans and drawings over to the cost estimator, and we developed predictions for what the two options would be. As you can see, the base option, the total project cost currently estimated a little over $3.8 million versus $4.5 for the enhanced option. I can go into detail, or I can ask open questions?
Yeah, well, why don't we see if there's some questions from the board? Has this gone through the, like, a long-range plan or the building committee or any folks like that?
I've talked with the building committee about the prospect of this idea for the last couple of years. And they have been presented with the same information you have.
Okay.
And after tonight's presentation, they'll get a copy of the slides.
Okay, great. Thanks. We'll start there. Mark, go.
Lynn, just a question. Patrick's shown two options here. Is that your full reno and then just below that, or is...
So, nope. This is the full renovation, but there's a baseline renovation prospect or a enhanced renovation. That is separate from the facelift that I was talking about. So there's technically three options.
Right. So neither of these is the facelift?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I, okay. So those were, that's fine. I guess my question is, are we designing this for five years till something better comes along? Or we designing this for 25-plus years as the next town hall? And we're just trying to get something to get us going?
Yeah, it's a great question. It's one we've talked about internally. After seeing all of this stuff come together, after talking with LLB, after talking with the furniture company that we got the quote from for the facelift option, we believe that if we go with either of the options you see on the screen here, that's a 30- to 50-year time that we're in that facility. If we go with the furniture facelift option, that's about a 20-year option. So I don't think anything is five years that we're talking about, partly because it takes us so long to do anything. I think in reality, five years is, we're going to be wherever we are for five years, at least.
Okay. Josh?
So on the facelift, we have $350,000 in furniture, which, and this says furniture's elsewhere.
Yeah, so Patrick, do you want to walk through what's included in some of those lines there, like the proposed building, for example?
Yes. So for the baseline option, this would include furniture, it would include some equipment. There would be some equipment brought over from town, if I'm understanding correctly. It would include flooring, new ceilings, new lights. It would include the sprinkler and power alarm upgrades. And then in the enhanced option, it would include some of the sort of the bells and whistles in terms of finishes, plus you would get the private meeting spaces. You would get some heating and cooling upgrades, not necessarily to the whole building, but for the project area. And I think that's the main difference.
So, yes?
Yes. Furniture's included in that big number. Yes.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Yep.
Yes. Furniture included, both these two top numbers, yes.
So if you're, if, I think maybe where, one of the areas you're looking for some answers would be, in the facelift option, what's not included? So that's not new lights. That's not new ceiling. We would probably swap out some tiles that were stained and put new ones up. It is not new flooring in the hallway. It is mostly paint, new carpet in the interior rooms, and furniture going as high as we can with the modular units to create the sense of privacy. But there would not be floor-to-ceiling walls installed because we don't have new HVAC and new, and we don't have a sprinkler system.
Would everything from the community house and town hall be moved here?
No.
Okay.
This would be all-new furniture.
No, I'm sorry. All the activity, all the offices?
Yes, everything.
What are we going to do with the old space?
We'll have to have another conversation about that.
Okay. We don't have a plan for that yet.
There's no plan for that. That would need a public process. I would, you know, I would certainly bring in the building committee, select board, and I'd want members of the public to weigh in on what we do.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing what the building committee would advise the board in terms of these options, you know, because they do a pretty thorough job looking at what's there and, you know, where to go along. So, you know, I'm hoping we'll have some discussion with them. But the other thing is, and I don't know, Lynn, if you can answer this, but, you know, when we look at the town, like for, you know, borrowing money and loans and so forth, they give us a rating. Do they look at the value of our building? So like, if we put money into this building, and then, you know, they say, well, gee, you know, we're looking at all the properties, and this property is worth significantly more money now than it used to be, will that help us overall when the banks look at us?
It's not like a traditional mortgage. It's not like if we were to take out a home equity loan or refinance your house. So I don't believe it does, but I can certainly check with Ian.
Yeah. I guess I'm thinking about the bond rating, if it affects that bond rating process. You don't think much?
I don't think so.
It has more to do with how we deal with our finances than what we own?
Yeah.
And how we take care of it. Yeah, okay. The other thing is, Patrick, you know, in terms of looking at these business spaces, did, was there some input? Did you guys gather information from different departments and different employees about what their needs were?
Yes. We walked through the current town hall, the current offices, to meet with the different staff, to find out what their needs are, and just to make sure we are providing the right spaces, to make sure that Greenwood has the right spaces they need. And I know specifically, I can go back, the treasurer, I believe, I believe it's a treasurer, maybe. They meet with individuals to discuss financial matters, and they need a private space that they can close the door, they have a computer screen, they could look at information. And they needed to be able to do that without having an individual walk into their space. So this is really sort of a, if you went with the baseline option, that meeting would probably have to happen in this conference room. Or if there's an interview going on, it'd have to go down here. And that's such a large space for one-on-one or three people to meet. You know, it could be done, but it would be probably nicer if you could have Cisco right here and talk to the person, whatever the topic is. So, yes, to answer your question, yes, we met with staff and helped inform our working force.
Okay. Yeah, Mark, go.
Yeah, I'll challenge everybody on the select board, that I might be the most financially frugal person on the board, but I'm not quite sure. But based on Lynn's comment that, and I believe that we're in this for 30 to 50 years, it seemed to me the right way to do it is to do it once and do it right. You know, and my concern is that we're going to spend four and a half million dollars and get a town hall that looks like a 1960s elementary school. And so I'm seriously considering suggesting that, or I am suggesting that we go ahead and look at what it would take to turn this into a town hall, and then go for a, you know, a prop two and a half, not an override, but an exemption vote, that would fund this beyond the prop two and a half. I mean, $5 million is a lot of money, but not for 50 years of a new town hall. And when people see what the deplorable condition our town hall is in, the fact that we've got people in the basement of the community house, and some at town hall, and some at Greenwood Center, and they're all over the place, you know, it seems to me that we ought to do it once, do it right, get everything we want for the next 30 to 50 years, or whatever that period of time is. Pay for it out of an exemption, yeah. Today, interest rates are high, but three or four years from now, we'll refinance it because we've got good finance people, and we'll get it down reasonably. And I would suggest that if we do that, take the ARPA money that was committed to this and find something that we can really use, that was the town needs for that ARPA money. Different approach, but if we're really going to do this, you know, we can't, in my opinion, to just, well, we'll just kind of do the mere minimum and turn it into some offices, and it'll still be an elementary school, and it'll still look like a, you know, crappy little facility that it was when it was the adult center. And to my mind, that's not going to be what the town of Longmont wants their town hall to be.
Josh?
Yeah. I spent a lot of time in municipal offices, and a lot of them are retrofitted into other spaces. And a lot of them are respectful of our neighboring towns. Some of them are real dumps. And the Longmontos, you know, I'm not, it's not great either. And I think that doing a facelift, because we have some money, would be really dumb. It's just throwing money away. And it would look, it would not look good. So as we were watching this, and as I looked at the pictures before, in my mind, I was thinking, well, how can we do this? And Mark, I'm a little shocked to hear that from you, but I'm glad to hear it, because I think, I agree, if we're going to do it, we can't just say, well, we got a million and a half bucks, let's see what we can do. That's dumb to me. So I would rather, I won't hear it from the rest of the board, but I think we should do something good, something we can be proud of. I know we have an adult center we're proud of, a high school we're proud of, we're going to have a middle school proud of soon. I think a town hall, if we can do it without ruining this financial consequences, I think we should do it.
Okay. Yeah. Josh, or Dan?
Thanks. Yeah, I would, I completely agree with Mark, as well as Josh. And as Josh mentioned, I was actually shocked as well, Mark, with what you had said. You win the challenge, I thought. But I was glad to hear, Mark, you're on board. I did a tour of it about two weeks ago with Lynn, and I think the same ceiling tiles are the ones that I witnessed when I was going there for after-school program, probably with your kids, Mark. But I think, I see this as an opportunity for the town. We have a lot of ARPA funds that we'll put to good use. But I just don't want us 15 years down the road coming back and saying, well, I wish we, I wish we paid for, you know, the other option. And things are just getting more and more expensive, so I think we need to take advantage of the -- we need to take advantage of the time that's, and the opportunity in front of us. Just a couple of questions, Lynn, maybe you can answer. So, there's still the gym that's over there. So, this would all be separate, or would this all be part of it?
No, this is the adult center side. So, let me, let me walk you through the diagram up here.
Right, so, I mean, just like what we walked through, right? It's going to be just that hallway?
Correct, and then you walk through the double door at the end, and you see where there's that hallway that runs up and down on the screen?
Yeah.
The hallway, the room to the right in shaded greenish tan, that is down below. That is currently a after-school program room, that room would need to relocate. And then across the hall in blue, that has had various uses over the years. Mostly, it's been a after-school room for daycare, for Parks and Rec, but it also has been offices during the pandemic for the COVID team. And so, in this scenario, that Parks and, I'm sorry, Human Resources would have that room on the right, because they also provide human resource services to the Parks and Recreation and the daycare, and then they would have a dedicated interview room across the hall that they don't currently have now.
Is there anything being done to the outside of the building?
Not in any of these plans, no. We have other projects we're pursuing via other grants right now that are looking at that. One of them is a redo of the parking lot to meet a lot of our MS4 requirements, but that's a different project. And if it's helpful, I could walk you all the way down the hallway and point out where we've positioned the offices. I spent a lot of time figuring out who should be where, just based on...
That was in the document you sent us?
It was, yep, yep. And it's the same in both scenarios, or all three scenarios. The only other thing I would add is, I, I agree with everything that you've all said so far, but I will say, if the $1.4 million ARPA is the only option we have, it is still a better option than what we currently are residing in. So, while it might not be the best, I don't want to forego doing anything because it, we don't think, you know, the five million's obtainable or the 1.4 million's the right way to go. The situation in town hall and community house is, is challenging, and we need to do something at some point. And I'd rather it be on our terms than someone else's terms.
So, a question, you know, in terms of custodial services, I don't really see anything on here. Is that taken care of in that building? Is there a place for the...
Parks and Recreation has, shares a part-time custodian right now.
Yeah.
Town Hall, Community House, Police and Fire do not have custodial. We have a contract person that empties garbage a couple nights a week.
Okay, so they would just need a storage closet or something like that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, there's plenty of space for that.
Is that included in this?
There's two closets on this side. There's also an entire commercial kitchen that has storage space in it, and then I believe there's other janitorial space on the other side.
All right, just because, you know, you want to maintain the space. I, you know, I've gone to towns where I can't, I had a difficult time finding the town hall, and so this will be sort of that scenario. People will say, well, where the heck is town? No, Greenwood, but I, one of the advantages is that because the adult center is there, a lot of our seniors will know where it is. And that's, that's a big plus. And then the other thing is, you know, we're putting money into a situation where we already have a building, you know. I mean, we, we looked at all kinds of options for that building years ago, and we thought, well, maybe we could put a second floor or do all these things. This is the best option we've looked at since I've been on the board, and I think it would be a good investment, and I think it is good timing. And then at some point, you know, we may, you know, like you say, we'll have a different discussion about, you know, there's a lot of great space in the community center that is not being used effectively. I don't know if you remember the second floor where there's that huge chairs that no one can sit in to look at the stage in the gym, and that's, that's a lot of space. And so, at some point, you know, we could do it, but you wouldn't want to try to run the town out of a space that was being renovated either. So, yeah, I'm on board with moving ahead. Yeah, Josh?
Lynn, point well taken on the, on the current setup. I hadn't really thought, that's definitely true. I know that people, it is difficult, and that space, we're squeezed, it's awkward spacing, so, point well taken on, we've got to do something for sure. And, but I, and I do think that when, if we are bringing this to the town as something to vote on at a town meeting, people are going to ask, what are we doing with the old spaces? So, just, not that we have to come up with a concrete plan, but it is something we should be thinking about, because it is a lot of space to leave, we should do something with it, so.
Absolutely.
Well, we have the town recreation department here tonight, maybe they can fill it up here.
Yeah, no, so I'm in agreement with everyone. I thought this would be more of a discussion, but I'm glad to hear that everyone's kind of on board with, you know, doing it once and doing it right. I think for the reasons of having a building that's ADA accessible, parking, and also to consolidate into one building, we know that that will make it more sustainable as well. I think those reasons are great reasons to do this. And then, you know, some of the designs, just little things like having clear signage of where the different departments are, that makes such a big difference when people are, you know, unsure of going and having to find a certain place, and just making that much, making it that much more clear, I think is really important. If we're talking about this also being where we want to house our municipal offices for 30, 50 years, I don't know if this is the stage we do this, but are there going to be opportunities for, you know, sustainability features that we can work in to make sure that, you know, we are not falling behind with emerging technologies as they come, and, you know, we're making that, this building a sustainable building?
There might be a question for Patrick. Do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, there is an opportunity. We'd have to take a closer look at the building to see what could be done, but there's always an opportunity to improve the building as far as that goes. There's lights we would probably install, at the very least, the LEDs, yeah, oh, a few segments there. We'd have to look at, the biggest savings would probably come from modifying the heating and cooling systems and looking at ways to, if there would be solar panels or something like that. But heating and cooling and making sure the building's properly insulated is probably the biggest two things we could do to the building to address that.
I think, I think the fact also is, Brian is L L B, that it's a existing building, and, you know, reusing that stock and embodied energy goes a long way to the recycle of the building that's in place versus creating raw material for brand rebuild. So, that, that definitely plays a big part in the same as L L B.
Mark, go.
Just, I guess my, my only question is, you know, I think back 25 or 30 years ago, you know, even though the town physically hasn't grown, our municipal government and number of people we have has grown by necessity because of new requirements and laws. And I'm just hoping that we have enough room, if this is truly a 30- to 50-year plan, that we don't end up, you know, 20 years from now saying, well, we got to put people in the basement of the community house because we don't have enough room there anymore. And I know there's a whole other wing to this building, although Barry's probably would not like the town offices to move into that, but I'm sure hoping that when we, if we go through this plan, we leave room for growth, because if the timing is what we say it is, we're going to need it.
Okay, good point. So, I mean, I would like to hear something from the housing and long-range plan folks. Would you guys agree that we should ask them to take a look at it? Okay, so, let's do that, or not housing, I'm sorry, the building committee and the long-range plan group, have them look at it, and then what?
No, I, so, I guess the question is, you know, if we seem to be in agreement that if we're going to do it, do it once, do it right, which begs the higher price spread here, or option, you know, then the question is, you know, how do we pay for it? And the five of us may be in great agreement, but if the town doesn't agree, we're back to a million and a half, a million and four. But, but I think we need to kind of look at a path forward that says, okay, if we want to do this, you know, what's the best way to pay for it? You know, what's the real cost going to be? I suspect it's going to end up being a little bit more. You know, I'd love to see us do something on the outside of the building at the same time, but that's a personal preference. And then just move forward, and because I think it does have implications to the ARPA money, which is, I believe, 2025, use it or lose it, right?
It has to be committed by the end of '24 and fully spent by the end of '26.
Okay, so, you know, at some point, we've got to use that money on something, right?
We are closing in on needing to have it committed, yes.
Quick question?
Yes.
Is there an opportunity, like with the Mass School Building Authority, for reimbursement in situations like this?
Not for this facility.
No?
Not this building. There are other grant opportunities that we are looking at. They're not open at the ti, at this time right now, and it also depended on which plan we went forward with. But we will try for anything and everything, as I think we've demonstrated, we're pretty aggressive there. One thing that I do have concern about, and I would probably bring this back to Paul and Ian to look at with me, is, you know, if we're looking at a pure debt-excluded project here, we're also, we have, we have a middle school on the horizon, and I'm really sensitive to, to going to voters and asking for that, knowing what's coming down the road. So, I think I would probably bring them this and ask that they get creative with me to figure out some options we could bring back to you guys. But I will also be asking that we move really quickly, because if we end up going back to using just ARPA and just doing the, you know, the bare-bones version, we have to have all of those contracts in place by the end of calendar year '24 to use that money. And then, on the other side of that, if we don't use ARPA for this project, we need to figure out what we're using that money for by the end of '24.
So, in terms of, you know, the, our group, do we need to vote on this in the next month or the next few months, or do you want to have us put on the agenda in December or January?
So, I guess, let me see if this sounds like what you'd want to do. I will take this back to the finance director, and we'll, we'll figure out some financing options. I will also, I've already sent it to the building committee, so I'll make sure that they can get a meeting set up in the next few weeks.
Okay.
And then I'll send it to the long-range plan steering committee and see where they are in their schedule of looking at things, and if this is something they could take up and weigh in on. And then my plan would be to bring that all back to you, either your second meeting in December or your first meeting in January, so we come up with a game plan.
Well, it'd be like a Christmas gift to the town, so I guess December would be good. So, all right, so it's great. Any other comments or questions? Okay, great.
Just real quick, the one thing I will add also is, if, if we go with any of the options that L L B has presented, one of the biggest advantages is that we would have a fully sprinkled building, which we don't have right now. And right now, Greenwood, Town Hall, Community House, and the two middle schools are the only buildings not sprinkled. And so, we know the middle schools are on the horizon, so those would be sprinkled when they get rebuilt. And if this happens, it means that all the facilities that we have staff in would have fire suppression in. So, that, I think, you know, that's an important thing to, to think about here.
Well, are the sprinklers going to be in the other wing as well, or?
Yes.
Okay, just to Mark's point for growth, I don't want us to just be...
It'd be the whole building.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
This building has, not, not each individual room, but the building itself, we spent a whole lot of money on electrical system feed to the building, we spent a whole lot of money on a roof for the building, you know, and obviously spent a lot of money on the kitchen, but that's not, so, you know, if you want to talk about the bones, you know, the main electrical feed, the roof, you know, I'm sure the walls, you know, what they are, so we've got a, we've got a viable facility. And fairly recently, I think we spent millions of dollars on the other, on the roof and the electrical system.
All right, great. So, the next item on the agenda is ARPA, American Rescue Act. And so, I asked the town manager to evaluate the cost of providing essential pay to individuals who left employment from the town of Long Meadow due to retirement during the pandemic or, and so, you know, I don't, you know, there's a couple of folks, and we mentioned, I mentioned two of them earlier, you know, the captain of our peace force, Gary Fontaine, left and retired from the town, but he served us during, during COVID time, and our deputy fire chief, Musgalia, and if you see the list, there's a lot of people who worked for DPW and so forth, who, you know, this ARPA money, in my opinion, was, is set up for people who were at risk, you know, who were frontline, and, and these, there were a lot of folks who qualified, but when we made the decision, we said that the person had to be actively working for the town. And it's just a matter of how you do business. I mean, I, I'm not going to fault the decision and say, well, you know, it should have included everyone then, because some people would say, we're just, we're going to take care of the folks who are actively on our payroll, and those who aren't actively on our payroll, you know, you know, they've moved on, you know. And, and I just want to bring it to the board to look at, these are folks who were working during, during COVID, they happened to retire, and, and they didn't get any ARPA funds for that period of time where they were at risk, just like everyone else, and I, I just didn't, it didn't sit right with me. So, I, I want to bring it to the board, and I don't know if you guys read the memo or had any comments about it or any thoughts about it, if it made sense. Mark?
I've read it, Tom, and frankly, I think our decision that was made at the time it was made was the right decision, and I support the decision we made. Essentially, at the time people were working, there was no promise made to them. This is a look back, and when you look back, you don't necessarily look back to people who are no longer employees. Now, if we had said, anybody who works for the next, however long this pandemic exists, will get us, we would have made that commitment, but we did not make that commitment. We made no commitment at all. So, this is a, you know, it's, it's almost like a rewards program, a frequent flyer program, or whatever it is, for people who are currently employees. But it's not a, it, it's not, in my opinion, a, a program to go back and, and reward people who once worked for us. This, you know, and I'll tell you, my personal opinion, or my personal experience is, you know, I retired from a company, and they said, okay, you retired, you retired, you're going to get your retirement. I didn't get my bonus that year because they said, well, you retired, you don't get it anymore. You know, so, it, it's common practice not to look back at retirees, and I, you know, I'm going to speak out to say, I don't believe that we need to at this point because we did not make a commitment to them at the time they were employed.
Right, well, I would say the, the look back is different, I, you know, for when you come to bonuses and so forth. This is like hazardous duty pay, as far as I'm concerned. It comes from the federal government, and I think it, we should look at it a little differently. I don't know if anyone else, yes?
Yeah, I, I guess I, I don't remember our discussions around this. I do remember us deciding to only reward people who've been working, but I don't recall our conversations why. And, Tom, I think, I agree with you that it's not, we are showing appreciation for working, I, it's not a, it wasn't a promise, we never promised it, because no one knew what we were doing, what we were going through. Now, if we want to show our appreciation for people who did work and were, had some hazardous duties, I think that that is a reasonable thing for us to do. My only question would be, how are we going to pay for it? And my, I noticed that one of, the amount that we could possibly expend is almost perfectly aligned with the health department COVID-19 earmark, and I was wondering what that was being used for at this point, Lynn?
There was, the last purchase made from that earmark was shelter supplies... There was, the last purchase made from that earmark was shelter supplies that became evident if we were to have to open an emergency shelter and we had to do public health precautions at the same time. And so this balance is what's remaining. But we, we have not identified any future uses related to COVID-19 for these funds.
And I do recognize the irony of me saying that the, America was not prepared for a pandemic and is now not preparing for another pandemic unless there's something in public health I don't know about. But I, I, I don't know if we, if we don't have anything in mind for that money, I could see us putting it towards this, and it, it almost balances it out. So that would be, I, I don't want to touch the painting, I mean, we could do it a thousand bucks or whatever the remainder would be, but I, I think the testing, the ductwork cleaning, that's very important for the Police Department, and the painting, I was always very gung ho on us doing that, because I think that's really important for our schools. But if there's nothing currently, the Health Department wants to do with it, I'm okay with applying it that way.
I should add, sorry.
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
The reason I select, I didn't want you to, I should add, after you just said that, why I selected these three accounts is because I knew that the COVID earmark hadn't had any action in a while, and we had no identified uses for it. The ductwork cleaning and the air quality testing, we don't believe it's going to cost 8,500 to do the rest, they've already done the testing, the cleaning is, is not much. And so we believe that there's going to be excess room there. And then the painting earmark for the schools and town facilities, we have, there, nothing has happened with this earmark yet, and I have been pushing DPW to get something out for this, because we have to have a contract in place by the end of 24, and the schools only have small windows of time when you can get in and do this work. So that's why I was suggesting this area, because I have a lot of concern that we'll be able to exhaust these funds by the end of, or commit to exhaust these funds by the end of 24.
Venite, yeah?
Yeah, I have the same question with the COVID-19 earmark, and I would also be in favor of using that to cover these expenses. And I, and I do want to say that I appreciate the way that Tom framed this in terms of looking at this as almost hazardous pay, and I would say that if we're looking at all of these individuals who worked during this time and are eligible for this, I think that we do have to reward everyone on this list here. Because if we look at just, you know, the folks that maybe worked one month, four months, you can look at it that way, or you can look at it as they worked during the most uncertain dangerous time of the pandemic, which was at the beginning. And so if we are showing our gratitude and our thanks and, you know, for, for this effort, they deserve it just as much as anyone else that maybe, you know, retired later on.
Yeah, well, we wouldn't want people, you know, to, I mean, there are a lot of places where employees just said, COVID, I'm, I'm not going to work anymore, because I don't want to put myself at risk, and, and these folks, a lot of them are there for a good portion of the time, so thank you for noticing. Yes.
And kind of what Venite was talking about as well, I was at an event earlier tonight before the Select Board meeting with public safety officials, and around the room, a lot of the same issues that we have in Long Meadow is staffing. And when I look at, you know, this issue that's, that's in front of us tonight, even in Long Meadow, I mean, we're, we're struggling to, to hire people, and I think people want to work in a town where they know that their leadership in government is, is, has their back, and I think it's important for us, you know, if we could go back a couple of years and maybe reword this, obviously we can't, but I think tonight we have the opportunity to, to do the right thing for the men and women who have served the town, you know, graciously, and I think we need to do the right thing, and, and like to Venite's point, we can't just, you know, pay one or two people. There's a, you know, a fair amount of folks here that put in their time during a crazy moment in, in history with the pandemic. So I think that we should proceed forward with the, the payment here. I think people want to work in a town where we're supportive of their efforts, so I think it's the right thing to do.
Well, hearing that, I'd like to make a motion that we, you know, that the Board approves the providing essential pay to retirees, retirees who were employed during the time of the pandemic, and using the formula that was in the memo that was sent to us today.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Should we clarify that the funds are coming from the COVID-19 earmark?
We could say that.
I think they have to be ARPA funds, right? But we can, I believe we can leave how to, do we want to leave how to parcel up to you, Lynn, or do you want us to tell?
I would like some guidance. Do you want me to do it the same way we did it for those currently working for the town?
Oh, I mean the, how to pay for it.
Well, that too.
Yeah.
Because it will change the ARPA allocation project sheet that we're working off of?
Well, the other thing is, there was 1.4 million ARPA funds that were, you know, talk about this renovation, and if we do, if we form the renovation differently, would some of that money be freed up?
Yes.
We'd have to wait until that, until we make a decision on that, I think. I, I'd like to, how about we do whatever's remaining from the air quality and ductwork cleaning, and after that, after that, the COVID-19, but I don't know, but I'm thinking about what you said with the painting, too. What, do, would you prefer which one we pull it out, or out of, or do you think there's a better one? The COVID-19 earmark also has to be spent, right?
Yeah, I, I would go with the COVID-19 Board of Health earmark right now.
Okay.
And then I would take the rest from the air cleaning, the air duct cleaning.
Okay.
Okay, so could add that to the motion?
So I, I move that the, that the funding come from the COVID-19 earmark, and any overflow funding be drawn from the testing and ductwork cleaning earmark.
Second.
Okay. We have a second?
Second. Second.
Yes, okay. I'll go ahead.
And that's with the same calculation we had done for?
And, and when you say that, you mean like the administrative positions received $100 or something?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. All those in favor? Close? All right, well, thank you, I'll, I'll sleep better tonight. Okay, we have Parks and Recreation Banner Policy. We attach to the agenda, the draft of the policy, for sponsorship of banners at Bliss Park, Turner Park, and Wolf Swamp Fields Complex. A town meeting vote by way of citizen petition in 2021 authorized this process, and so Barry is here from Parks Rec, and I want to call you Barry Byron, but that was a long time ago.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present the draft for the sponsorship. I'd love to give you a little bit of a history and then run through the plan, and then if there's feedback, I would like to hear that, too. So some of you may remember, probably Mark mostly, that we started to think about different revenue sources about 15 years ago, and sponsorship banners was something that we identified as a potential to add to the revenue mix for the department to offset, not just for the department, but for DPW, who is financially responsible for all the field maintenance. So you will recall about three years ago at town meeting, there was a citizen petition to establish the, the revolving fund to receive the monies. We've been working since then on a policy, I've benchmarked other communities, and interestingly enough, there's very limited municipalities that actually run signage programs themselves. Most communities, most communities don't do it. The ones that do, it's usually outsourced to a specific sport association, like Little League or a soccer association. So we are very unique that we are presenting this opportunity as a municipality. We created the policy with some benchmark with the communities that I did find. So in terms of the signage, the, the color, the, the size, the fee, those things, it's been presented to the Park and Rec Commission for feedback, it's been presented to the Town Manager and DPW Director for feedback, and it's also gone to our legal counsel. So it's been vetted with all of those groups. We, something that is very unique, that no municipality that I have found were, were doing it a little bit differently. We are providing the specifications and have the advertisers come to us with the banner in hand and the check and the placement request, and at that point, we will approve, and then DPW will put them up. We'd love to implement this as soon as January to begin the solicitation for sponsorships, knowing that it will take a little bit of time, but we'd like to begin to place them for the spring of 2024. And the reason that it's Bliss Park, Turner, and Wolf Swamp is because that's how the citizen petition was written. Our focus is on Wolf Swamp, but Bliss and Turner Parks were part of the citizen petition, so those are also included in the plan. You'll see the actual specifications for the policy, you will see on the second page the application, and on the third page is a map of Wolf Swamp Complex. Bliss and Turner are very simplistic, there's only a few fields, there's two at Bliss, there's three at Turner, but Wolf Swamp has the opportunity to place them on baseball fields, and there's two different sized baseball fields, so we've zoned out that particular facility, so applicants can pick what zone they would prefer their sign placed. And that's really the gist of the plan.
Okay, and I just, you know, it, in some ways, I think of like a small town where you have like, you know, Phil's Association and, you know, you know, Josephine's Donut Shop and so forth, and would this be limited to businesses who were practicing in our town?
It is not established to just limit to Long Meadow businesses, no.
Is that something that could be established?
It could be. This is, this is a draft, so it certainly could be.
It's a draft, okay, yeah. Is that, I mean, I think there's, well, I mean, you know, we, you know, we're going to have a Jersey Mike's, and we're going to have like national chains, but still, there's something about, you know, people who have a business in town, being part of it would give it a hometown feel, a little bit different than, you know, some used car dealership or something, you know, yes.
We have a used car dealership over the line that advertises the reminder, they might want to put one in, and my Levine Law in East Long Meadow is going to put up a sign, so if you limit it that way, I think you're, how are you going to draw the line? I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, well, if they, if they have property, a business in town, they would draw the line pretty clearly.
Well, like my, I don't have a business in town, but I'd put a sign up.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So that's just, I...
But you're a resident.
Wow, yeah, I, I don't know, it'd just be, that's putting a lot on them to, to check that. So I, I think, like I said, I think it's a great idea, I can't wait to put my sign up. Do you, how many spots are there total? Could, what's the possible revenue?
That question would be asked, so it's estimated anywhere from 300 to 400, so depending on how, because some of them can go double sided, so the baseball within the interior of the park can be double sided. Most of them are perimeter fences, it's the perimeter fence. Depending on how many we get, we would be very strategic, so there's not a cluster in one particular area, we would make it aesthetically pleasing to...
400 signs would be pretty gaudy, if we got to that, but...
It's a lot of area.
Oh, I know, but...
It's a lot of revenue.
I mean, yeah, Parks and Rec would be rolling it, if that's what it was.
And we don't have 400 businesses, so we can't limit it.
But, so, what, the other thing I'm curious about, so I think it's very smart to say, it's not a public forum, we don't want crass stuff going up, and I think that that's smart. I, I would just maybe, it, it says that the banners must fall within the above stated guidelines, I think, but then the guidelines are below, so I think maybe just put it up into the policy guidelines, what, what is actually banned. And I would also just make clear that the Parks and Rec Director has, or whoever is, has ultimate authority, has authority, so people can't question it. But the, the one that I think that it does come up there, or where that kind of falls into an issue, you're having people print signs and then bring them to you. Was that, are you trying to limit something that way, or?
Limit maintenance, yes, so...
Oh, but I, but like somebody could say, here's my design, and you could reject it, rather than someone saying, here's my banner, and not getting rejected. It just could be...
Are you suggesting a different wording of the process perhaps, like the design review?
Yeah, send you a draft, and say, yes, that, that looks fine, and then people can maybe think about it more, too.
Thank you.
Yes, Marco?
Yeah, I agree, I agree with Josh. I think that you ought to, the, the policy ought to say, you know, the wording, the design, whatever, needs to be approved in advance, because it's, it's going to be really shame, somebody pays X number of dollars for a sign, and then you say, sorry, you don't, we don't like it, or we don't approve it. So that was my only comment, is if somehow we can get that authorized in advance, I think Josh is right, it's the right way, it's, it's the right, right way to do it.
But I, I truly hope you're getting a lot of people trying to do it, I think that would be really fantastic. I like when I see that in other fields, like it adds to the ambiance.
I would just say that back in the day, we used to have signs on Strope Field, and it was, you know, I remember, it was the Long Meadow Baseball Association, I was part of it, we'd, we'd go out there in the spring and we'd put the signs along the outfield fence.
Their signs are not.
Right, and they're done by the LBI's, right?
Yeah.
Long Meadow Little League, yes, they do that, for that specific property that is owned by the library.
Every $100 a year for it. Wow, any other, Josh, Dan?
I think this is a great idea, thank you for bringing this in front of us. My question is just around, like where the, where the funds are, are going in terms of, is it a separate account that you're setting up?
Yes, it was established at town meeting, approval was established at town meeting three, three years ago, two years ago. So it will be a special revenue account that is separate from the general fund, and the DPW Director would have jurisdiction over that account, because they are responsible for maintenance.
Okay, so where do we go from here? Do you make adjustments? Do we have to vote on this tonight, or?
Do we have to approve your Park and Rec policy?
We'd like, yes, we'd like a vote on it. You can wait and have the language added and bring it back, we could bring it back adjusted, or you can make the amendment with the, or you could make the motion with the amended language included. Whatever your, I mean, we have some time, Barry and I met this morning and talked about the timeline, so...
Is this from March?
Barry would like to roll this out in January.
Okay.
For March implementation.
Yeah, I'd, I'd make the motion as amended, if you have enough information, or to approve, sorry, to approve the policy as amended.
Can we review those amendments just one more time?
Sure.
So the, the process, it'll be more of a process oriented directive, so design, design review than the banner. I did write down limit to Long Meadow businesses, I don't know if that, that is a strike, okay. So I think that was the only piece, is making it procedural, design review, and then...
And then, so where you have, under the policy...
Having it above.
Yeah, so we're, starting with banners, I would put that abo- into the actual policy guidelines above.
I drew an arrow, I did know that, and then I'll do, I think it's the same on the application page, so I'll make sure that that matches the policy.
If we're set, then do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we're ready for a vote? Don't further discussion, all those in favor? Great, thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
Jarvis, for coming in. And next, we have a, we got a letter for a dog as a nuisance complaint on November 15th. Any comments from the Board at this time in regards to the motion?
I mean...
Venite?
So what is presented in the letter does fit, you know, could potentially fit underneath dog as a nuisance. Has an investigation started already, like have we reached out to the Animal Control?
Yes, so I had forwarded this to Animal Control when I received it on the 15th, and lo and behold, Marty Lee was already looking into it, she already received a, a complaint in another way. So yes, technically, the investigation is, is underway, but under current bylaw, because although it was adopted at town meeting, it's not officially yet, it's go through AG's process, we're, you know, we're still, I was proactive and I sent it, but I'm still just bringing it to you. just for procedural matters until that bylaw comes to, you know, fruition.
So this just fell into the middle ground?
Yes.
So do we, we need to move to refer this?
We'd have to make a, a motion to refer-
To cause the investigation for the-
And then the investigation could, would come back to us. We don't necessarily have to have a hearing based if, if they're able to mitigate it.
Correct.
Which-
Which, we'll have that information by your, at the December fourth meeting.
I'll move, I'll move we refer this to the animal control officer and ask our town clerk to do that or ask Michael to do that.
Okay, do a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All right. And the common, uh, Victor Entertainment License discussion. There's a memo, the agenda detailing the, uh, Victor and Entertainment licenses. Uh, would anyone like to comment on this further? It's something we've been doing for a bit, yeah?
Yeah, I was going to say, we've been doing this. I, after we got this, I sent Mike the, the last time we did this, which was a few years, twenty nineteen, I think, before, before the pandemic. And it had an outdated list. So we've been doing it. I don't think we need to, I mean, I think the law requires us, or bylaws requires to do this. So I don't think there needs to be a vote.
Right. Wouldn't the health department make sure that they had that license?
Different license.
Yeah, this isn't the health.
Health department issues, issues food service establishment licenses. This is a different license.
Okay, all right.
So this, all my clients who've got liquor licenses, get common vics, we call them, because nobody knows how to say it. Um, but it, and that's for not restaurant food, but like snacks and stuff.
Any facility that cooks, prepares food and has seating on premise for people has to have a common vic license in the state.
And who, who enforces if they don't, if it's on the Board of Health?
The License Commission.
Oh, that's us, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Lynn, one of the things I found though, was the last time we did this, it did include the big Y.
Yes.
It doesn't have, they do have seating.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep. So when you sent that information off to Mike and I, um, we looked back through and it, there was that, that vote that you did in twenty nineteen. I will add though that liquor licenses all along have been paying for the common vic license here. It was the ones without liquor that had not. And so you did something in twenty nineteen, but then in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, it wasn't carried through. I, I don't know what happened during that time, um, but we discovered this with, uh, yeah. We discovered this with the, with the New Jersey mics coming into town, which as, obviously with the chain they're used to. Just if it's a state law, they're used to doing this in every municipality. And same with Starbucks, I think.
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll get the list, um, situated and up to date. The, the older list from two thousand nineteen, about half are, are still present. So the list will have to be updated and then we can go forward with bringing them forward once the applications come through to the December fourth meeting when you're set to do your normal twenty twenty-four liquor license renewals.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, Josh.
Does anyone have the entertainment license? Does anyone need one?
Um, so that's another thing that I came across while, and I apologize, I don't know why this keeps disconnecting. But, um, in research I also found that the entertainment licenses, um, I haven't, I didn't see anything historically that we've done in town, but yes, according to the statute or statutes, um, businesses who are holding events under those, as defined in those chapters are subject to having entertainment purposes.
I've got a couple of places in town that are having live music, so.
Yeah, and I, I'm just looking at my folders here. We actually did that. There was actually in twenty thirteen, there's Umi Asian Bistro. We had a, an entertainment license.
Was it full year or just like a one time?
No, the whole year and we gave them a license and we had it here. So, and there were others as well. But, so we, we've done it in the past. I, I don't know of anybody who's applied, but we've done it.
Well, we will set, the board sets the price of license fees. And so we could make those like two dollars a year. No, I think it's good to have live music, but yeah.
There's a cap. The state caps it. I'm not sure if there's a minimum or anything, but-
I know they don't like happy hours, but I hope they're not too hard on live music.
Well, it's like anything else, they can only, we have, can cover our fee or our time spent essentially on getting the license or on investigating.
Okay.
So, uh, Mike hasn't here, it's a hundred bucks for a common vic. I, I bet entertainment's around the same, so.
Okay. Um, so is there, so we'll just look for those as they come?
Yeah, I don't think, now that we've realized that there was a, you know, a past practice, I don't think there needs to be a vote or anything if, if you feel otherwise. But, you know, we'll just, uh, refine the list of the common victor license needs for businesses that are non liquor license holders. We'll run that in conjunction with the health department so that they can confirm, you know, yes or no.
And you send out like the liquor licenses, you send out a renewal package?
Correct.
To just include the common vic and the entertainment if they-
I'll just do it around the same time.
Yeah, and send it to everyone and then they can, yeah, okay.
You know, I, I'd give a Mike a copy of actually the memo that was sent out in twenty nineteen. So he's got the format and all that stuff.
All right, good. All right. We can move on to our next, which is the holiday trash amnesty. You know, we know that people with large families, uh, collect more trash during the holidays. So any ques, any comments from the board on the memo that we got and the recommendations?
No.
Yeah?
Uh, people should buy recyclable wrapping paper. And don't fill up their trash bags with it.
That's it. I had a brother-in-law, he used to take, well, the funny papers, I don't know, the comics. Probably no one's even seen one of those in a while and wrap all the Christmas gifts in those.
Smart guy.
Tom, I'll make a motion that we grant the amnesty from December twenty-sixth through January sixth of one extra bag per household, uh, for each of those two weeks.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? All right, great. And now we can set the, we, I know it seems like we just had a town meeting, but I know you have to set the, uh, location and the date for the annual town meeting for Tuesday, May fourteenth at the Long Meadow High School gym. Is there a motion for that, Tom?
Someone moved.
Someone moved? A second?
Second.
No further discussion. All those in favor? Okay. And correspondence, any comments on the correspondence for tonight's agenda? All right.
I think there's also a draft of the budget calendar.
Yeah, so I, uh, didn't need any, we didn't need any action with that. We just wanted to give you just a heads up before our December fourth, uh, joint meeting with the school committee and finance committee, um, which will begin at six P M. We have quite a lot of business, uh, that night and tax classification hearings. So the, um, budget calendar is set to be approved by the board that night and reviewed with the other committees that are involved.
Oh, yes. We love those meetings. We have plenty of them.
That's going to be a big one because the IT study will also be presented that night for the joint meeting.
Mm-hmm. Okay, great. Um, well, great job, board members. Have a great Thanksgiving. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All right. Good night. Everyone have a nice Thanksgiving.